All right, this is the Village of Peatone Board Meeting for May 28, 2013. We'll begin by rising and saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Riker.
Here.
Mr. Huffke.
Here.
Mr. Wicker.
Here.
Mr. Hack.
Here.
Mr. Callahan.
Here.
Mr. Forsythe.
Here.
Okay, let the record show that we have a quorum present to conduct official business. First order of business being a review of the minutes of the May 13, 2013 Regular Village Board Meeting. Trustees, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes as presented, approve the minutes as presented, or if you see a reason, let us know in a correct way.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by trustee Huffke, second by trustee Forsythe, to approve the minutes of the May 13, 2013 Regular Village Board Meeting as presented. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Huffke.
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. The minutes are approved. The next item is the paying of the bills. I'm getting ahead of myself here. Trustees, you have in your packet the payroll for the pay period ending April 27 of 2013 in the amount of $45,076.79. You also have bills from the General Water Fund totaling, general fund rather, totaling $67,548.59, and from the Water and Sewer Fund totaling $2,487.34. And in the Capital Improvement Fund, this one of $1,949.50, we're going to hold that one pending approval later. It's the final payment of outside electric, item G. Is that a dollar amount? So if that is approved at that time, then payment will go forward. That being the case, that the total for all those bills would be $71,985.43. So calling for a motion to pay the bills with the exception of the outside electric bill for a final payment of $1,949.50 pending approval later.
I make a motion we pay the bills.
I'll second it. Motion by trustee Wicker, seconded by trustee Riker to pay the bills with the note, the exception being the outside electric bill as stated. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Huffke.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Bills will be paid. Now it's time for a public comment and/or questions about any non-agenda item. In other words, if the item is on the agenda later and we're going to talk about it, hold off until then. Marge, call out the mic phone.
I just want to, everybody knows my name, so I don't have to say it. I'm here too often this year anyway, I haven't been. Just want to thank each and every one of you for the cleanup on Third Street, okay? I did call the mayor and thank him personally. Did take me a couple days, I was busy, but I want to thank you for jumping on that and taking care of it. It looks great. And I kind of have a question in regards to the code officer. Is there any different line of work he's going to be doing as far as if there is a house empty, houses are being sold and they're up for sale, some are empty in Peatone, that he would actually be able to get out of his car, go in the back and check things out, make sure things are clean, some other neighbors don't have to see what I had to see for them? Or other neighbors there on Third Street too? I mean, is that all he does is drive by and take a look on the outside of a home in the front, or what is his actual job?
George, do you want to?
He can get out to some extent. We, unless he has cause, there's some questions as to how much you can go on private property.
Well, I thought he was, I mean, police officers can go on private property anytime they want, so what's the matter with the code officer?
Police officers operate under a different set of laws and regulations than the code officer does.
Does he take an oath when he takes that job?
No.
Or is there no oath?
At least not as sworn officer, no.
Does he get paid for that job?
Yes.
Is that from taxpayers' money?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it's from other things, but yes, taxpayers' money is included, yes.
State funding, whatever, but he gets taxpayers' money for his jobs?
Yes.
Okay. You know, I'm just saying, most of the people in this town want to keep their homes and their yards nice, okay? That incident on Third Street was horrendous, and as all of you saw in the pictures. And I just think, you know, there is an officer that drives by, looks at properties, looks at grass being too long, looks at abandoned places. I just think part of his job might be a possibility that he could get out and make sure that things are clean, that's all. You know, that was horrendous, what was on Third Street. But again, the reason I came up here was not to talk about the code officer, it just came to mind just now, but to thank you for getting on that and having it cleaned up. It looks wonderful back there, and let's hope that no other property looks like that. And I'll take drives in the morning if you want me to. But thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Marge. All right, anyone else with comments? I'm getting out a comment, not on that subject, but relative to this, our Memorial Day Parade and service that the American Legion were in. For those of you who were there, it was pouring down rain. Yet the, everybody marched the way they normally march, the scouts were out in the rain, both the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts. The high school band.
Band played in the rain?
Sat in the rain and still played fantastically. And there was a very good crowd for a downpour, not only along the route, but at the cemetery itself. And so I just want to say as the village president that I am really pleased at how well the community came out and supported our veterans and the soldiers that we have lost and honoring them on Memorial Day. And it's another example of why this town is a great place to live and work. So, having said that, I'm going to move on. Reports of committees. Chief, anything to report?
I did dry out from the Memorial Day Parade. And just to let, I was speaking to some colleagues in the world of, and Playfield canceled theirs because of the potential rain, and I did comment to them that.
I know you called it more.
Called it the way you said it. I was thinking, I said, "Why, you guys don't play in the rain?" But.
Short of lightning strikes.
Well, it's real lightning strikes, but it was just the brother of the community always supporting each other, and we can all dry out. But the scouts and everybody who was in the march and the veterans, they were all soaking wet, but we know that we've been out there in the heat too, and we're always, we're soaking the other way with the humidity, so it's a very, we got through it, and like we always, thank you, but nothing to report.
Thank you, chief. Engineers report. Troy, any updates on anything?
Nothing new to report.
Okay. Old business, we had at our last meeting the, I think it was the auxiliary that asked for the poppy day, and we granted approval pending ratification of that approval at this meeting when all the paperwork and everything officially got turned in and accepted and all that. And so I will entertain, Judy, do I say anything?
Just that I was so proud of everybody that I asked to volunteer. They raised over $1,300, and I think that's probably the most they've ever raised.
Who wanted the haircut? Who wanted the haircut?
Ralph Heft.
Ralph Heft, all guys, huh?
I kind of encouraged them with a free haircut if whoever got the most in their can, and Ralph Heft won, so.
Well, thank you for that.
I was very, very pleased with it all. It was, turned out nice.
That's terrific. Okay, I will entertain a motion to ratify the previously requested.
So moved.
Poppy days.
So moved.
Second. Okay, motion by trustee Wicker, seconded by trustee Forsythe to ratify the request granted for the poppy days on May 25. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Huffke.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. It's officially ratified.
Thank you.
Like there was doubt, right?
I was a little nervous.
Thank you, Judy, for doing that.
Good job.
Okay, do you, home occupation permit? George, you want to update us on this?
Yeah, this, the under old business, the application for automotive tech, automotive repair, and the board had some additional questions. I sent a letter, I believe the next day, to Mr. Weiss asking that he attend because the board had some questions they wanted to ask, and I had a response.
And Mr. Weiss is not here this evening?
No.
Okay. That being the case, it would seem reasonable to just move forward with that item? Do we have to take an action?
I think that we just don't do any, you know. It's not beyond agenda until he comes back.
I didn't know if we had to table or anything like that.
Right, no, you don't need to table. If he ever comes back and responds, then you can just put it back immediately.
Okay, let me make sure we did it right. Okay, having dealt with that, we're going to move right on to the next item, special event. Park District Midsummer Nights Music Festival. Judy, I think you're here for that.
Yes, thank you. I included a memo that I gave to the mayor last week, and hopefully you will all have that explaining a little bit of what I'm requesting. The Park District usually has a major fundraiser every year. Unfortunately, the last few years it hasn't generated enough money, is what we would like. As you know, we're finishing the preschool building and working on the Pearl Building, and we're in the homestretch, and we look like we're going to be pretty solvent to get those projects finished in the next few months, but in addition to wanting to fundraise, we really wanted to get some things going for the community, and it's always been my desire because of my personal love of art and music to have some sort of music festival. So we looked at that weekend in July, the weekend of July 19th to 21st as being particularly good because we're all done with our Little League and softball leagues and everything we have going on at the park primarily in the summer. And we were wanting to get a three-day fest going. I have a variety of bands already lined up. This is trying to be a family-friendly fest and trying to get ages five to 95 out there. The bands that so far that I've committed, that have committed to us are bands such as a steel drum band, a jazz band, I don't know if any of you have been familiar with, they were formerly known as the Paul Germano Orchestra that Steve Tangerin plays, and it's like a 17-piece big band band. They're now called something else. But we're looking at those bands, the silhouettes, again, things that really have all age appeal. I don't want this to turn into a lollapalooza, or as I put it in the memo, a piapalooza at all. And we're looking to kind of get the whole community involved in this in terms of people that might want to volunteer or help, get some of our local vendors out too. And I did talk to the chief about closing off part of Blue Devil Drive from probably the junior high on out to West Street too, to allow people to be able to walk and set up some vendors. And we've also contacted some of the local restaurants about providing food, you know, just so they'd have three or four food items out and have kind of a mini taste of Peatone out there as well. I think it'd be really nice to do for the community. I don't know if we're going to get fireworks involved, I've kind of got a budget set, and so far I've got, we have a full-time intern at the park who is out soliciting sponsorships and getting some money together for us to make this possible, but again, with the liquor license, we're just really looking for beer and wine, nothing more complicated than that. And obviously, you know, I talked to the chief about his concerns, and I'm lining up enough volunteers and security personnel to make sure this would be very strictly regulated and monitored so that I don't anticipate any problems.
Okay. Give us a brief overview of how this works, because we've never done this before. What goes out, you've, what goes on?
Okay, well, I'm have.
Just roughly.
Yes, roughly. What we're trying to do is like Friday, say after 5:00 or 7:00, we're going to have probably two bands Friday night, and we're going to, we're looking at probably the northeast section of the park, next to, if you know where the pavilion that runs north-south is. We're looking at setting up our stage, our covered stage there, and you know, snow fencing off an area there, and then having the food vendors in the pavilion, and then having other vendors, like if we have a sponsor, say from, you know, sponsors from the community, they're going to set up booths and have their business information there and such. And we're going to have bands going on, and you know, hopefully people selling things, and we're trying to get like kind of a Peatone Idol Contest going there too, and in touch with Ms. McKay to try to get the show choir, and having in touch with Main Street Dance about getting them into. We're looking at this as an opportunity to not only entertain the people in the community, to get people out to see that they don't have to leave their town to have entertainment, and to get the businesses out there that want to showcase their business too. It's, you know, I'm the owner of two small businesses in this town, and it's been a struggle for I think everybody in small business, whether it's in Peatone or Peoria. Anything we can do to bond together as a community and support each other in businesses, and I think this would be just a great thing to get going. You know, whether we have, you know, Judy up there with a booth, or Pearl Dodge up there, whatever, I'd like to see the whole community involved and really, you know, support this and see what we can get going.
Does one buy a ticket or something?
Well, what I'm looking to do is to sell like a weekend pass for $20. That's what I'm hoping to pre-sell these. And then we'd have just, certain bands would have a paid, you know, entry fee. If we get the show choir and some of our local talent to perform, I'm not anticipating to have a fee for that, but then we'd have a reduced rate for like a weekend pass for kids or seniors would be $10, and maybe $3 a band if you want to pay individually. And I probably will have about eight bands lined up. We want to make it worthwhile to say, you know, buy a weekend pass so you can get out there all weekend. And so it's going to be pretty much continuous entertainment, maybe about a half hour between bands, and then we're going to have a DJ for in-between those lapses.
What time at night do you think you're going to shut it down?
By midnight.
If you look at the request, the amplifier permit specifies the times that we'd like to do that, and the.
And it would be 10:00 on Sunday.
Yeah. So trustees, do you have, number one, any questions about the event itself?
Are we allowed to ask a question, or is this strictly because it's been already on the agenda, we can't ask any questions? I'm just curious.
Go ahead and ask.
Open coolers anywhere in the park?
No.
Is it going to be designated? Well, how are you going to stop that with young people? You know, I mean, that's my concern. That's my concern. You got a park full of kids listening to music, anybody can bring in a cooler, now you've got kids drinking in the park and leaving the park and.
We're not going to allow people to bring in coolers.
How are you going to stop it from that area?
Well, we're going to have at least 20 security people working around the clock, and then I've talked to the chief about these concerns, so.
Anybody ever looked up that form that the Park District and the Police Department signed that there was no alcohol on the park property? And the question, the next question would be, why haven't you checked into the atrium that's in the open property area?
Well, one, we have, we'd have to pay to use the atrium, pay a fee, and two, this is to showcase the park.
So what are you doing as far as the alcohol? How does that bypass?
That's why we're applying for a special use permit. That's why we're here.
In the Park District?
Yes, we can, yes.
And school grounds, actually. Sorry, you're about to school.
We're not on the school grounds.
Do you have an idea where in the park you'll set up?
Yes, right on the, basically on the corner of North, where North, where West Street and Blue Devil Drive come together, we're looking at that.
The pavilion area?
Right, southeast quadrant.
So you'll actually have a beer garden?
Right.
How late would you be serving alcohol?
Probably only till 11:00 and then 9:00 on Sunday.
So an hour before closing?
Right.
Because I believe that's the way we do it most other places.
Yes.
Is if it's permitted, if it's originally granted, it has to be shut off an hour before closing?
Last call.
Yeah.
And throwbacks to providing the insurance and all that stuff like that for the beer garden, they're going to be the ones selling it?
Yes.
Other questions, trustees?
On the fireworks board.
Hi. We haven't gotten that far yet.
Okay, that would be a separate.
That's something I'd like to.
Yeah, separate.
Separate approval.
Request, I guess, is what I'm trying to say, yeah.
Right. I don't know if we're there, quite there yet.
That's fine.
I'll let you know. We'll be back next month if we are.
Okay, so essentially we have three motions, one on the event, or one on the special event permit, one on the liquor license, correct? We have to hold on those separately?
You don't have to necessarily. If you feel like you'd like to break them out, that's fine. If you feel like they can combine, that's fine.
Okay, let's break them out.
Okay.
Okay. So there's really two motions there. One having to do with the Midsummer Nights Music Festival, July 19th to 21st, with an amplifier. The times requested, and I've got to double-check, I'm going to ask to double-check on this because I'm thinking in the past when we've done other events, have we, have we stopped, have we, amplifiers turned off before midnight? Do we go, I'm asking.
What's the fair run to when they, for their music?
I don't, they go to midnight. I work there every.
I'm just saying, being.
Well, they go to the end, right?
Yeah, being that it's kind of that same area.
Well, and I think it's a good analogy. Okay, so the request on the amplifier permit is for Friday from 5:00 p.m. until midnight, Saturday from noon until midnight, and Sunday from noon, from, yeah, noon until 10:00 p.m. Okay? So is there a motion to approve the application for the special event permit for the amplifier?
Motion.
Second. Okay, motion by trustee Huffke, seconded by trustee Forsythe to approve the Park District Special Event Permit Application relative to amplifiers as stated in their application. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Huffke.
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Motion carries. Now, the next item has to do with the request for a Class C2 liquor license for the three days of the festival, for beer and wine only, with throwbacks being the provider of service. With the times, and I believe we have, you stated, it's, on the request it states until closing time, however, I think in the past we have asked that about an hour before you start closing up, be, by that time, everybody, by the time you're officially closed, then everybody is out of there. So.
And there will be a fenced area.
There will be a fenced area.
Distributed and consumed?
Yep.
And all the over 21 people will be armbanded.
Okay.
Will the music also be within the confined area, or is that separated from the?
Yes.
Okay, so the entire event will be confined?
Yes.
So there's still no open alcohol in the park?
Yes.
Okay. All right, is there a motion to approve the request of Park District as stated? Motion. Motion by trustee Forsythe, seconded by trustee Riker to approve the one day, well, the three-day liquor license, one day at a time, for the Park District with the hours being, ending one hour before closing on each of those days, for beer and wine only, fenced off, and.
Containers?
I'm sorry.
Plastic room?
Yes.
No glass?
No glass, plastic container. It's the usual rules that we have for stuff like that? Chief, I'm looking at you.
Well, just something to keep in mind, understand realistically and nothing against the park, you know, we really probably, before this all takes place, need to see a site plan where everything's going to be drawn out, because where the liquor is going to be stored and where it's going to be contained at, I know they're saying armbands, but you can't have armbands throughout the whole park property, because that would be, nobody's going to be able to police that. And I understand there has some security trying to keep the BYOB out of there, but I just want to say that every year we spend several months in our event for the fair. It's very involved in our community. We sit down and map out all the issues involving safety, parking, emergency services, now Blue Devil Drive's going to be shut down for one thing, part of it, I mean, there's a lot of site map that has to be identified where things are going to be held, because, and a lot has to do with planning for weather, because July can be severe weather time, and you know, those are always concerned when you have large gatherings. I mean, special event planning is a very involved plan. I compliment the park for trying to put the event together, but it is a, it's more than one person can handle, or a couple people. It's very involved for something they're trying to do, so I just ask that, in these considerations, the beer garden area, I mean, we say plastic and bottle, you know, plastic and cans, but I haven't seen where the beer garden would actually be set up with all these stages, and I know they're going to have to bring power in, and I don't know where the power's going to get laid, because it's these concerns of safety that I have, because it's not on our property, but if somebody gets hurt, we'll be out there. And I don't have the staff to provide security for this park event. I mean, that's, when we have the fair event, you see how many auxiliary from the fair coming, and get hired by the fair to be help with security, so there's a lot to, this could involve a lot if you have a good turnout, you know, traffic control, where traffic's going to flow, because I want to talk, the police can't handle this event for the park and where the cars are going to park. Their volunteers have to get them parked somewhere and plan where first day is going to be, and heat, if it's a hot day, you're out there all day. These are considerations that I just, for public safety, that's my field, and I compliment, but they've got a huge task to get this all in place by late July. But as regard to your question, and sorry to go, I just would ask that, while with your motion, that we see some site maps in the future where all these events are going to be played at, and I'm expressly concerned about where electricity is going to be staged.
Okay.
Because if they bring in a power generator, you know, what, we know that events, you have to be careful where those wires are laid, because you can't have the public and wires crossing each other. I mean, they really have to be protected, and I hate to see anything bad happen, but that's my job, is to try to keep bad things from happening. But in response to your questions, yes, contained fence, plastic and aluminum is what they ask.
Okay, just to pull in what you've just said, I'm going to ask the two people who made the motion in a second, if you would be amenable to including within that motion the site, a site plan demonstrating where the beer garden would be, where the electricity would be coming in, where the.
Staging.
Stage will, yeah, and all that. Just so everybody's clear on it and we've got plans in place.
Yeah, that's absolutely fine. We could have that available at the next board meeting.
Okay.
Before that, provide it.
Yeah, I think you could provide it to the chief.
Do we want? Based on the chief's experience and when that scenario was laid out, that they meet all the criteria to make it a safe event. I don't think you have to bring it back to the board, but.
Right.
They have to work with the chief and the fire department and everybody else there. That's the only way you can grant this.
Is it possible to make it subject to the chief and the liquor commissioners' future approval?
There's got to be, somebody's got to prove it, you know?
Okay.
Somebody's got to look at it and do something about it.
All right. All right. Have you got this figured out?
I have until just now.
All right. That is essentially the, the approval of the permit, the liquor license, is tied in with the site plan, the electricity, the stage, and having worked out safety questions to the satisfaction of the chief and the fire department.
Well, it's true, because, you know, the fairgrounds, everybody knows, the fire marshals go through there and check everything, and fire department goes through and checks every barn, every electrical line going through to make sure there's no, oh darns.
Yeah.
Because when you involve electricity, and I know they can't run power to where they, you know, it has to have some power source for any mounted bands.
I know there's stuff at the pavilions, but probably nowhere near what they're going to need.
We, we did talk to Jerry, the gentleman who does the maintenance at the park, and he did ascertain what type of generator we would need.
Okay.
So.
Because when we did, a few years ago, just to remember, we did the beats in the streets.
Yeah.
I mean, we had a licensed electrician that tapped in and laid a power cord on the side of the street that was covered all the way, because we were riding the sidewalk area downtown.
Yeah.
But Mr. Strubart came and made sure it was meeting our codes, so for safety, because we didn't need electricity problems.
Yeah, that's the whole idea behind it.
And even though we had rain that day, you won't behold, you know, we didn't have any concerns, and, and I'm not negative to anything to the park or anybody wants to do in the community, but I have to take into account my responsibility as a safety, and even though it's on park property, fire and police are going to get called if there's a problem. And I don't want to, you know, necessarily, I can report to the board in a timely manner if any concerns that their site plan may have, but I will, I will be more than happy to work with the park, telling them how we put together a safety plan to deal with, you know, the heat, the weather, and we do this all the time. We've been doing it for the last several years with the fairgrounds for that event, because it is a tremendous event, it involves a lot of people.
Particularly if you have a lot of good turnout.
With some of the bands.
More being optimistic, you're going to have a really good turnout.
All right.
All right. Now.
I'm ready.
You're ready. All right. So, board members, you understand what we're voting on now?
I have one more question.
Sure.
You mentioned aluminum, you're not going to have canned beer, are you?
No.
Just draft beer?
It would all be draft, right?
Okay.
Yeah. Or if it is dispensed, it's dispensed out of a can into a plastic cup, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. And then, all those things pending the, a review by the chief, and I'll throw the liquor commissioner in on too. Okay? So, motion is to approve the request with the items, as we stated before, relative to safety, beer garden, stage, plans, subject to review by the chief and the liquor commissioner, the approval of the three-day, one, three one-day liquor licenses, is the motion that's on the floor, with all that stipulation. Okay. Now, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Huckey?
Yes.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes. Okay. Motion carries with the stipulations mentioned.
I'll go with the chief later this week.
Yeah, we can put it on top, you're very happy with it.
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda has to do with the presentation by Rita Ficina in CASA.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come out this evening and share with you updates on the CASA program. I'm primarily coming out to provide information and create community awareness for child abuse in our community. CASA recruits and trains community volunteers to effectively speak on behalf of children who have been abused or neglected, and we represent those children as their guardian ad litem in the Will County Juvenile Court. Our carefully screened and trained CASA advocates are the child's voice in the court. CASA's primary goal is to ensure that all abused and neglected children in Will County have a CASA volunteer advocating for their best interest, so that they find safe, a placement in a safe, permanent, and nurturing home. Recently, I was in my office doing some work, and our office resides at the River Valley Justice Center. Juvenile Court is in a separate courthouse in Joliet, and it's a secure environment, and we're fortunate that Will County provides us a small office space right outside the court, so that we can work with our children. And there was a little boy in our office, and he was from this part of the Will County community, and he was about eight years old, and he had been really, you know, you could tell that he was visibly upset. And sometimes they'll, they'll have the children sit in our office when, you know, they're doing court matters, and so he was in our office with his big sister. And the children had been removed two days prior, they were removed from their mother for safety concerns, and they had been placed in a shelter. So, by the time they got, they were going to court, and, and these children had thought that they were going to be going home with their mother, and they had been terrified that they had been placed in a shelter for the last two days, can you imagine? And a public defender came in and told the little boy, you can't go home with your mom, she needs to get services so that she can properly take care of you, and, you know, the little boy, as you can imagine, was visibly upset, and he said, this is the worst day of my life. Unfortunately for this little boy, he had a lot of bad days before he got there. The court does not arbitrarily just pull a child from a home unless he's, it's pretty bad circumstances. So, as you can imagine, this is where a CASA volunteer gets involved with the lives of these children, and we work with them and their families to provide recommendations so that, to help them work through the maze and be there for that little boy to, to help provide him security when he's bounced around, and, and in this unstable time of his life. In 2012, last year, CASA advocated for 100, we had 104 volunteer advocates who served 274 children in the Will County community. Our volunteers worked over 15,000 hours, and they traveled across the entire Will County, over 36,000 miles advocating for children. Sometimes children can be placed, you know, if a situation takes place in court, in Will County, they, they can be placed anywhere, and sometimes they're placed, you know, we have volunteers driving to the southern part of Illinois, we have some driving to Chicago if they've been placed with a relative in Chicago. So, we are all across the state advocating for these children. When a child is not represented by a CASA volunteer, they're represented by a public defender, and as you can imagine, their caseloads are heavy. Our requirements to see these children, we, we require our volunteers to be in contact with the child and that family every month to ensure that their safety and wellbeing are looked after. The standards for a public defender are far below that. A public defender is only required to see the child possibly once or twice a year, and oftentimes, when that happens, they may meet the child like five minutes before going to court, or they may ask DC, DC ambassador and agency to bring the child to their office, which is, is totally different than the work that the CASA volunteer does, is because we're going to the home checking on the child, we're calling the schools, we're going, we're visiting the child at the school, and we're following, following up with all of their social workers, so that they, we play a very active role in the, in the guardian ad litem role that we play for these children versus what a public defender may do because of their limited resources. In the village of Peatown last year, we served four children, and we continue to make strides. As I mentioned, we served 274 children last year, but that was only 50% of the kids in the Will County community. We have a lot, and many more kids fall through the cracks because we don't have the resources to provide a volunteer advocate for these children. What can you do to help? To be a CASA volunteer and raise community awareness, what I'm doing, it requires 33 hours of training, and it takes, we ask our volunteers to spend anywhere from 10 to 12 hours possibly a month, working with that family and reporting to us, so we can understand what the best interest is for that child. Becoming a volunteer is not for everybody, it takes a special person, and sometimes when you come into our court system, I have to honestly say, some days you think you've seen the worst, but I can guarantee you, something will happen, and it'll be much, you know, you'll always see something that you thought, you know, somebody could not have to another situation, but it does happen. But if, if you're unable to serve as a CASA volunteer, consider helping our families through our fundraising events. We have a golf fund coming up June 28th at Rockwell Feathers, and, you know, we, we always need community support. How our program works is while we work to advocate for the children, we still need supervision, so for every 30 to 40 volunteers that we have out in the community, I have to have case managers oversee their work. You can't imagine that you can have a community full of volunteers and nobody overseeing that they're doing what we represent that we say we're doing. So, there, there's much to be done, and we really appreciate your consideration to help our program, whether it's through volunteerism or, or helping through a donation. You have to really remember that helping these children today will better their future for tomorrow, and that also has a huge impact on our community too. So, today I brought some little bookmarks, if you know people that, you know, have the right heart to help children, please pass them out and try, let's try and get some awareness. I provided you information, fact sheets on what it takes to become a volunteer, and I also brought some information on a golf club, and we'd love to see you come out and support our cause. Okay? Thank you. Do you have any questions for me?
Trustees?
Thank you.
Yeah, we will give us what you got, and we will put the extra ones in upstairs, so that folks who are interested can, to stop in and pick it up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rita. Next item on the agenda is Welcome Home. I mean, Suzak.
That's me, and I'm back. Good evening. I would like to say that I have a date and a time, but I don't. I have five to six of our soldiers coming home from Afghanistan, Army National Guard, and they are due stateside on June 6th in Mississippi. With the Army National Guard, they'll be going through debriefing there, which we have no idea the amount of time. The dates that I have from the kids right now are between June 10th and June 20th. I know that, that board and the community has been so supportive that I, I probably don't need to come and tell you every little thing, but I just wanted to make awareness as soon as I'm aware, as a couple of kids, we may not even be able to do it those days. Some of them have to go farther away, they're not coming right home to Peatown, so, which I've just found out in the last two days or so. So, what I guess I'm really here is, when they come home, is it okay if I?
Do the usual.
Tell you and invite you all to come and.
Do the usual.
Do the usual? Okay, well.
Yeah, we'll be there.
And I appreciate it again. The only thing that I really did want to say, that if I find that all six of them are game for the parade, they're all kind of being humble heroes right now. My concern is, normally we close out the street there, and the parade comes through and we go into the legion. If I have six families, we may need to keep that street closed a little bit longer if that, if that's something I need to come back in for.
We'll work it out.
All right. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Thank you for what you did.
Oh.
Next item on the agenda has to do with a special event for the colon cancer. Oh. I don't know, did you miss something?
No, no.
Katie Reagan?
Hi, I'm Katie Reagan, finishing out my college career at Bradley University in Peoria. Then the next semester, so just a little background. I've lived in Peor, uh, Peatown since I was 10. My past generations have been here their whole lives, so they're dear to my heart. But I'm coming to approval, to seek approval for a colon cancer 5K and bags tournament on September 21st, 2013. Colon cancer has affected my family for many generations, so that's why we picked this to focus on. So, the race with, the 5K would start at 4:00 p.m. at the American Legion, that's where the start and finish line will be. The route is similar to the double dash that you guys have approved, but I'm looking for guidance on that, I've worked closely with Chief Mark to.
And I think it's one of those things, the chief and you will work out the details.
I'll go run the course and tell you how long it is.
Yeah, right.
Zero point 5K is.
I got till September.
So, following the 5K, there will be a beanbag tournament hosted at the American Legion. We've since discussed and decided to keep the party in, in the American Legion, not out on the street, it's just easier that way.
So, you know, a couple of major changes are, you, are you going to need the road closure?
Road closure for the start and finish.
Yeah, but I meant for the after-party.
Not for the after-party.
Okay, so, so that's no longer.
I decided to just keep it all inside.
Oh, okay. We got the R. The R. Inside. The side R.
And, and beer and wine and liquor is now inside the legion, so that means you don't need any permission from us for that.
Right.
Okay. So, yeah, it was easy, right? All right. So, what we're looking for is a motion to approve the 5K run, and we're not closing off any streets or anything, well, only for the run itself.
Only for the run.
So moved. Second. Okay. Motion by trustee Wicker, second by trustee Forsythe, to approve the, the colon cancer 5K run on September 21st with an amplifier, do you need the amplifier?
I don't, I already changed that, just keeping it all inside.
So, yeah, so basically, it's the event. Okay. But moved and seconded? So, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Permission granted. Good luck with your event.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. All right. Next item on the agenda is authorizing Spear Financial to prepare and obtain bids for its. I'll finish talking when you flip to me.
I don't have time to remember.
We talk too much. Authorizing Spear Financial to prepare and obtain bids for debt certificate. George, you want to go ahead and explain the details of that?
Sure. The village has programmed $600,000 into the five-year capital improvement plan for street and associated drainage projects. The village has programmed approximately $300,000 in projects for 2013, and approximately the same amount in 2015. Five-year capital improvement plan identified a six-year debt certificate as a probable funding instrument for this work, but that certificate is similar to a loan. The $600,000 must be spent within three years from the date of the issuance. Spear Financial is a professional consultant to the village on financial matters, bonds, debt certificate, et cetera. Historically, Spear has assisted the village in the issuance of these funding tools. Authorized, Spear will prepare bid documents and conduct the bid process for a $600,000 debt certificate, the six-year term. Bidding is usually conducted online, and local banks are invited to participate. Spear will return the bid results with a recommendation to the board for action. Once a debt certificate bid has been awarded by the board and the document's finalized, the village can go to design and bid on the projects. After the public works bid has been awarded, the village will need to adopt a resolution authorizing the use of the funds for each project. Again, this is for street improvements, including, we'll make it including sidewalks, curbs, drainage structures, as well as streets and alleys, in case we run into associated problems.
In short, this is a way to take the items in our five-year plan and borrow the, the money necessary for it, and pay it back out of the funds as they come in during that time period. By pooling the money upfront, it, it allows us to spend, it allows us to do more work faster, larger projects, as opposed to piecemealing and waiting. So, that's the essence behind it. So, what we're after is, this is a regular motion, it's not an ordinance, right?
Yes, that's correct. It's a regular motion, that will come later, the ordinance or resolution. Just for clarification, the money to repay back this debt certificate will come out of our general, you know, our, our general budget. We aren't asking for any additional monies from, from the residents or the businesses, it'll, we'll just find the money in our general budget to pay this back.
Okay. So, I need a motion to authorize Spear Financial to bid a $600,000 debt certificate for a term of six years for the purpose of street improvements, including but not limited to design, construction, and maintenance of streets, alleys, curbs, sidewalks, and ancillary structures. Is there a motion to that?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Wicker, seconded by trustee.
Second.
Second.
Hubkey. Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Hubkey?
Yes.
Mr. Reichert?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries, and Spear Financial is authorized to bid $600 in debt certificates. Next item on the agenda has to do with a resolution opposing the Aqua Illinois petition for certificate of public convenience and necessity for a water distribution system. That's one resolution, or is there two?
One resolution.
And the resolution opposing the creation of a new Aqua Illinois service area in eastern Will County. George?
Aqua Illinois has filed a petition with the Illinois Commerce Commission for a certificate of public convenience and necessity to construct, operate, and maintain a water distribution system in areas of Cankey Key and Will Counties. The requested area begins at the north edge of the current Cankey Key certification area, which is roughly Manteno and Grand Park, and extends northward to their current University Park certificate area, University Park and Green Garden. Approval of the petition is submitted would allow Aqua Illinois to provide water service to a large portion of unincorporated eastern Will County, the village of Piattone, and the village of Moni. Total size of the petitioned area is approximately 75 square miles. Stated need for the new service area is to address rusty water complaints in University Park. University Park is currently on wells. Aqua proposes construction of a water main from their current Grand Park Popping Center to the southern edge of University Park. Pipeline would provide UP with Cankey Key River water. However, water from this pipeline could also provide water to any customer in the new service area. In addition, no further ICC approvals are necessary to construct additional water mains in the area, exposing all 75 square miles petitioned to expand them without further ICC review. In a future petition, Aqua Illinois could consolidate the existing Cankey Key and University Park service areas and a new service area into one unified service area. In other words, University Park, the new area, and Cankey Key Park would then blend into one unified area. The village has filed a verified petition to intervene on the Aqua certification of application for the ICC. Intervention petition provides the village standing before the ICC to submit testimony and evidence relative to the application. Village staff and consultants are preparing comments regarding the application. The attached resolution formalizes village policies being opposed to the Aqua petition.
Trustees, we've discussed this before, and we're all very clear on the potential impact this would have to our area. We're also, incidentally, seeking with this resolution, affirming our action, that some of our neighboring communities are, will also support a similar resolution opposing this, thereby adding more strength to our petition. So, looking for resolution number 13-R-06. Resolution opposing the petition of Aqua Illinois Incorporated for a certificate of public convenience and necessity to construct, operate, and maintain a water distribution and wastewater collection system in the areas of Cankey Key and Will County. Is there a motion to accept that resolution?
Motion.
Motion by Trustee Hubkey, seconded by Trustee Wicker, to approve resolution number 13-R-06. Clerk, please call a roll. Got ahead of you, didn't I?
Mr. Hubkey?
Yes.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Reichert?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
And Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries, resolution is adopted. Next item on the agenda has to do with the final payment request to Outson Electric.
Outson Electric has submitted a final payout request, or pay request, is for the installation of the Conrad Street lift station generator. The invoice is in the amount of $297 for miscellaneous finished landscaping. However, this figure should not include retained, previously billed but not paid. The amount needed to close out the project is $1,949.50. The work has been inspected by village staff, and staff recommends payment in full to close out the project. Therefore, approval of payment to Outson Electric in the amount of $1,949.50 is in And you have the engineering's recommendation to support that petition.
And as you recall earlier, when we approved the bills, this amount was the amount pending approval at this point.
Motion.
Okay. Motion by Trustee Forsyth, seconded by Trustee Reichert, to approve the final payment request to Outson Electric in the amount of $1,949.50. Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Mr. Reichert?
Yes.
Mr. Hubkey?
Yes.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries, and the final payment will be sent to Outson Electric. Okay. Next item on the agenda has to do with enacting and adopting a supplement to the code of ordinance.
There are actually ordinances which have been adopted by the village board, are sent to American Legal Publishing Corporation and prepares a supplement to the village code of ordinance. This ordinance adopts supplement 2013-S27. This is, this does not establish any new ordinances, it simply takes the ordinances that we've got and approves their entry into the codification, the code hook, which in turn will go on the...
Which we do at least a couple of times a year, and basically, it's formalizing in the actual code book the exact location of all the ordinances that we have amended or changed over the past several months. So this would be ordinance 13-05, adopting the, an ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the code of ordinances for the village of Piattone. This would be supplement 2013-S-27. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So move.
Motion by Trustee Wicker, seconded by Trustee Hubkey, to approve ordinance number 13-05, an ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the code of ordinances for the village of Piattone, Illinois. Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Hubkey?
Yes.
Mr. Reichert?
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to ask that we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees. Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Oh, I'm going to add one more character. For... Looking for... Yeah, I got it. Okay. The second reason to go into there would be discussion of real estate negotiations.
Motion.
Okay. Motion by Trustee Forsyth, seconded by...
Second.
Trustee Hack, to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, and real estate negotiations. Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Hubkey?
Yes.
Mr. Reichert?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries, and we will go into executive session. We'll take it actually. Let's move on to the planning.
Up here.
Okay. I would like a motion to go back into regular session.
So move. Second.
Motion by Trustee Reichert, seconded by Trustee Forsyth, to go back into regular session. Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Reichert?
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Hubkey?
Yes.
Motion carries, and we're now back in regular open session, and the next item on the agenda has to do with accepting the resignation of part-time police officer John Mueller of his position.
Motion.
Second. Okay. Motion by Trustee Forsyth, seconded by Trustee Hubkey, to accept the resignation of part-time police officer John Mueller. Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Mr. Hubkey?
Yes.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Reichert?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries, and we accept the resignation of Mr. John Mueller. Next item on the agenda has to do with hiring a replacement part-time police officer in this particular case.
I don't know what that is. Severe weather.
Yes, it is.
Oh, severe weather.
Yes, the weather world. A severe thunderstorm.
We're going to authorize the filling of the part-time police position that was just vacated. In this case, approving the part-time police officer Brian Peterson? Peters, I'm sorry. At the rate of $16.49 per hour, effective immediately. Is there a motion to that effect?
Motion.
Motion by Trustee Wicker, seconded by Trustee Hubkey, to approve hiring Brian Peters as a part-time police officer at the pay rate of $16.49 per hour, effective immediately. Clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Hubkey?
Yes.
Mr. Reichert?
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Motion carries, and Mr. Peters is now part of the part-time police force. It's a long day. Next item on the agenda is to hire a full-time billing clerk assistant, billing clerk, an assistant to the zoning administrator, and I'm going to ask for the approval to hire Stacy Hartwell as the replacement billing clerk, an assistant to the zoning administrator, at a starting rate of pay of $12 an hour, effective as soon as possible.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Trustee Forsyth, seconded by Trustee Hack.
You know, the later the meeting goes, the faster you guys talk.
More my tongue gets twisted, too.
Forsyth and?
Hack.
Hack. Okay.
Motion carries, and Stacy Hartwell is officially hired as a replacement billing clerk assistant to the zoning administrator. Next item on the agenda has to do with questions of the press, and seeing as the press is not here, are there questions? Any announcements relative to deadlines or anything coming up for the village?
We should make a statement about the branch pickup.
Oh, okay. What about this? Did we have a problem?
We have had some calls. When residents check the website, we should remind them that if branch pickup is on Monday, they should probably have their branches out on Sunday, so they're ready.
Oh, that kind of reminder, because, yeah, because you never know what time of the day, or whether it will be Monday or Tuesday, depending upon what's happened over the weekend, when they get picked up.
Sometimes in the next 48 hours, I will put something on the website that says they have to be out, to be picked up by 6:00 AM Monday.
Seems you got the camera, many already garbage is one day late.
Yes, yes.
Oh, yeah. I mean, the new residents who haven't gone through the holiday cycle, because I noticed a couple of the totes out at the curb today, and kind of like, you're new. It takes a while to catch on to, which holidays are the, it's the major ones, Memorial Day, Labor Day, Fourth of July. What's the other one?
Christmas.
Christmas, New Year's. That's pretty much it. Okay. Any, no other announcements?